All right, I have six o'clock. Close meeting to order and no call.
Right, Ms. Hudson.
Here.
James Coyle.
Here.
Scott Catten.
Here.
Pamela Brando.
Here.
Jared Bramerson.
Here.
Terry Neuer.
Here.
Tyler Munson.
Here.
All right, before we go any farther, I'd like to amend the agenda to include a late application for Amber Brings to the approval. And the other thing I'd like to do is I'd like to move reports up ahead of the close session.
Second.
Yeah, that was.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Let's lead you in.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, proof of posting, a copy of this notice was delivered on six three. It was faxed to Star News, posted at the Black Earth Municipal Building and at the Black Earth Post Office, posted on the website, www-blackearthwisconsin.com, and faxed to the State Bank across Plain Black Earth Ranch. All right, public input, three minute limit, please.
Thank you.
All righty, okay, by three minutes. Hey, everyone, my name is Calvin Bolz Buck. I'm the district outreach manager for Congressman Mark Spokane, who lives not too far away from here, actually, just out in the township of Vermont. So I work out at the Congressman's Madison office. For a while, we had kind of split up outreach where we had two folks who were splitting up communities recently to tell they that, the one person, me. So I've tried to make sure this summer of getting out to all the communities that I haven't been to, to introduce myself and just give a few updates. The big thing this Congress, in its absence, already working on this, is the American Rescue Plan and what to do with those dollars, the state and local aid funding. I know that various communities are looking at different projects to put that into and money to open schools and expand vaccine access. The other big thing is the bipartisan infrastructure law. I know that just today, the governor just announced 40 new projects around the state, so I'm just over the county line, actually. And so there's going to be a lot of money there, a lot of that's going to be formula funding. So if you haven't already, I would recommend reaching out to Wisconsin DOT to see if you qualify. I know that there's going to be consecutive applications for that, if there's anything we can do to be helpful in connecting you with the right folks. We want to be sure that we're a resource there. And then just broadly speaking, if there's ever any projects where you all are looking at federal grants, we can help with letters of support, help connect you with contacted agencies. Sometimes, I know we've worked with communities who have issues after they've applied for a loan through federal government or anything like that. If there's ever any way that we can be helpful to the village or to the individuals here with federal agencies, so, you know, they're not getting back to us on this rural development loan that we applied for, or I'm having issues with my taxes, or folks here in the community are having issues with VA, Social Security, Medicare, anything like that, we have full-time staff, we, that's what they do, is help folks with that. So whatever's going on in Congress, that work is always going on. So want to be a resource for that as well. I'm going to leave some business cards if there's ever anything specific that comes up, any community events or projects or things that you want to see if we can be of any help, either, again, with helping to find some federal funding, once you do find it, do some letters of support, or if you're having any issues with those agencies, we want to be sure that we're available to all the communities, big and small, throughout the district. So really appreciate an opportunity to briefly say hey.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll leave a few business cards with Shelley, and please feel free to reach out to me going forward. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
All right, number five, action items, discussion action on liquor licenses. Class B retail liquor license for Sharon Enterprise Shack and Chris Evans Blackwood Leans LLC, class A for BP and QuickTrip cigarette tobacco license, P and G and QuickTrip. Do you want to add another motion? Well, we had an issue with one, right?
They didn't, QuickTrip on their application didn't.
For the cigarette, they didn't mark a question.
They didn't say that they were going to keep their, I guess according to state statutes, they had to keep records of their cigarette and tobacco sales for two years, and they checked that box, but I don't know how big a deal that is.
What I'm going to tell you is at least on the class A, do that stuff for it, because I don't want them to be in a bad position.
Okay. All right, so I'll make a motion, we approve the class B liquor, retail liquor licenses for beer and liquor. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I make a note, Shelley, that I have stains?
All right, so let's go to class A. Would be BP and QuickTrip. This is for the liquor license, not tobacco.
I'd move approval.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, cigarette and tobacco license for P and G and QuickTrip.
Make a motion. Oh, second.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. All right, we're going to go to B, which is discussion action on operator licenses for the shack, to renew for John Richter, Debbie Allen, and Brad and Weinberger.
And Amber.
And Amber, Amber Brings.
Amber Brings, and Amber was licensed in 2015 to 2017, and we have.
And her license in May's law now.
I'd move approval.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, now for QuickTrip, and there's a whole list of them.
They're it.
They all came out good. I think it must have been true.
Yeah. Oh, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, get us going. All right. So discussion action on Revolution 2022-05 vacating portion of the road known as Main Street. This is not an action item. This is just an introduction of a revolution. There's still a lot to be worked out. It's, we got 40 days to approve it or not. And when do we take ownership?
According to Mike Coyle this morning on the phone, he informed me that the request has been in with the title company to get that paperwork rolling. The holdup was the funding from the DNR back to the ground for the tax to actually pay for the property that has finally been finished. So there were two parts to the funding, county and DNR, right now. Kind of work is being started. They're going to set up a closing date, hopefully within the next couple.
Within that vacation portion, I'd like to make a motion that as soon as we take ownership, that we get a survey of the property.
Do you need a second on that? I'll second that.
I can get down that the resolution has been introduced by Hudson. And then there's a motion. Ownership.
So we can come back to this resolution.
Yeah.
After the results of that survey, correct?
Well, more than that, I mean, we still have to properly notice the residents in publicist.
Publicity.
A 40-day notice. So I'm hoping that within that 40 days, we'll have the ownership also taken care of and the CSM started. I will probably contact someone on the CSM tomorrow, because they've been so backlog, I don't want it to.
And if it doesn't work within the 40 days, which is supposed to. No, they called Calvin.
There you go. All right.
And at that time, we're still mowing, right?
Yeah. Carefully mowing.
So, yeah, we're mowing, we've mowed it twice, about two hours each time, and Danny and Shelley have been kind of keeping track of that time-wise, just our hours and such.
Motion on second.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, discussion action on annual CMAR Resolution 2022-4.
I believe in the packets, everyone should have our C Mar packets. You know, it's real basically, it's all for year 2021, gives a little bit of a financial summary, electrical consumption, we did not have any sewer backups last year, just kind of goes through ordinances that are in place and such like that. This time, we don't necessarily have anything scheduled for repairs. Shelley did apply for that bill loan, or bill funding grant. I guess if we do qualify for that, then we would actually start the process of that, structure replacements for sewer and such.
Goldman, after you completed, is it the DNR?
DNR, yep, yep. We keep file here, and then DNR needs it for their records and such. So if the resolution adopted, then I just complete the process and send everything to the DNR.
I make a motion, we approve Resolution 2022-04.
Oh, second.
More discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Discussion action on Village Board's amendments from 5/3/2022.
I'd move approval.
I'd second.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? All right. Discussion action, Treasurers' Report, April of 2022, revenue and expenses for May of 2022.
Oh, great. All right, you should have, your Treasurers' Report is through the month of April at this time. With all accounts, we are sitting at about 2.9 million. Our CDs are 1.8 million of that, that is the library CD and the electric monies that we borrow for the substation are in the CD. Our LDIP is sitting with about 1.5 million in there, leaving about 539,000 roughly in our checking book to pay our bills at this time. So moving on to our revenue and expense reports, our general fund revenue and expenses, these are through the month of May, where we should be at about 41% of our budget. You'll see that the carryover funds that were approved May 3rd are now into these numbers, have been brought in after the resolution was passed across all funds. In the general fund at this point, our revenues are sitting at 11.8%, with expenses at 33%. Just a reminder, in the general fund, we won't see that come up to expected budget numbers, with our August tax settlement. In the general fund, I want to note that the village did receive a dividend tax from our, we've got some insurance of about 868 bucks, and our working comp audit also has a refund of about $726, which you'll see reflected in invoices being paid tonight there. I want to note, too, that as Matt said, I did have, the bill grants were applied for, we put in the application for Ray Street and Hillside for a total of about $823,000. I got that in May 31st. Those are things that will obviously impact our general fund at some point. The electric funds, our revenues are sitting at about 37%, with expenses at 36%. So we're still a little bit below the expected revenue at this point. Water fund revenues are at 39%, with expenses at 40%. Sewer fund revenue is 39%, with expenses at 38%. In the water and sewer, some of the expenses are impacted by the debt payments that were made in the month of May, those are paid for the year on those utilities. Also, tonight you'll notice in our bills, our Dean Iowa bill is reduced significantly on O and M and capital, there's that credit that we usually see a couple months out of the year. So those will be reflected. Revenue side, on the electric side, our rate case is moving along a little bit slow. The first data request has been received, and I will work on those responses for the rest of the season. That is what I have for your financials.
I'll motion, we approve financial report, revenue and expenses.
Oh, second.
Any discussion?
My question, you mentioned the electric revenues are down. Is that still too?
What does that do to, you know what, that's really hard to tell, other than when you look at the water revenues up at the top, you can look at the rate class, run it down to the general service of our power, and see over to the right where they're at for budget. Where we probably see the most significant revenue drop is in our large power, U P one customers. Most of our small commercial and even our residential are right at that 39, 40%, slightly below, but not as far as the large power at 29%. That's where we're seeing a good chunk of that revenue. And of course, each month, that's up. Why are we seeing that? I cannot tell you, other than our conservation markets going on at our large power customers.
It's going to happen.
How they're running their business impacts that, whether it's going to impact that.
Quick question, like on your Treasurers' Report.
Yeah.
Book balance as of March 31st, 2022, you have 679, and then between then and April 30th, it's gone down over 100,000. That's every month.
Yes, it is.
We have 200,000, roughly a $1,000 a month of revenue.
If you look at the bills.
50% every month?
If you look at the bills that we are about to pay, our bills are quite high every month. Most of our bills that we see are electric utilities, I mean, Alliant Energy's bills and our, they're the majority of that, we're seeing that loss every month.
Like, 50% loss every month, isn't it?
Will you make some of that up to power cost adjustment?
This month, our power cost adjustment is very high. We've got, we've got folks that are, of course, not real happy with, and we haven't seen this power cost adjustment this high for two years. So, you know, yeah, that helps make up a little, it's going to be enough, I mean, we don't know that we see that every single month at that.
More discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Discussion action on invoices to be paid. I move approval. All in favor?
Oh, second.
All right. One second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, let's go to reports. Vanguard did not have a meeting, so Sean, you want to get your report?
They just put in new services, committing more and more every day, getting busy, pretty good. We did have a customer on Hardview Road, northeast side of our service territory, he lotted off a couple chunks of property, so we actually gave him about 2,000 feet extra of our service territory, he paid to extend primary electricity to his lots, so when he solves it, that should be a little bit of benefit to whoever buys it. So I did gain a little service for danger, but something.
That's all right. After the fire, I don't, they met.
Yes, they did, that's me.
That's you now.
That's me now. We met on Thursday, May 5th, that was my first meeting. Towneberry also had a new rep, Travis Austin, so there were two newbies on there. They reported that all municipalities are paid for current dues. Chief Mahaka said they had a successful pancake breakfast, remain slower for calls. Mike, Mark Geiser, who I believe is the Maisel Fire Chief, and our chief are going to meet last Friday of the month, so Chief Mahaka hopes that continues. They purchased a new Jeep, 2007 Rubicon, which needs to be outfitted, and they're trying to work on that while they're currently, while they're current with burn activity. And then we discussed the vehicle replacement schedule, which is holding steady, but they're going to get together with Dan and a little bit more content to see where we are with that. Otherwise, that's the report.
Thank you. Dean Iowa.
We met.
Oh, next meeting date for the fire is July 7th, Thursday, July 7th, sorry.
Nope, same. We met May 19th. So the annual true-up, like Shelley was saying, we get two months that we get reduced rate, and then the third month, usually July, they'll send out a check for the remaining balance, because that ties up their end, year-end review. The guy's got a 2% increase on hourly and approved on-call pay, which will be starting in July.
Which was significant.
Yeah, it was, well, I don't have an exact number, because we don't, didn't true it up, but it's about $8,000 per person. Here. Roughly. Are there no discharge violations? Next meeting will be June. 16th at 6:30 PM.
June 16th?
Yep.
All right. Not having EDC, but we will soon. Don't have a date yet. EMS.
We met on May 12th. Talked about different things for training perspectives, how are we going to get new volunteers in, how are we going to get them trained up? We still have that ongoing issue with lack of volunteers, looking to resolve that with full-time employees. So that's an ongoing situation. As far as like COVID-19 updates or anything, they said new normal, nothing, nothing new is going on, this is just kind of the state of affairs, so there, this was also, you know, a couple, about a month ago, so I don't know if anything's changed on that front, but, you know, normal, things is normal. We changed, made a motion, changed titles to chief and deputy chief from director and assistant director to more aligned with EMS and just kind of normal standards there. I did talk about some AED stuff, that I'll bring up more in the Parks Committee, but we have some information on AEDs being placed in the park that I'll follow up with. Outside of that, let's see, we're, our next meeting is July 14th at 6:30.
Thank you. Jerry, can I ask a question about the recruitment process?
Mm-hmm.
Is there an offer to pay for those classes, because, you know, sometimes those classes, they're long and they're in-depth, but they're also kind of spending?
Yeah, so I could get your specifics, but there, there's definitely stipends, because they have to like drive, and I believe there's like meal stipends and things of that nature. They're, they're talking about doing a new process where it's all online, and then you go do like a one or two-day course in Minnesota, and have, and then you get your certification there, and then you come back here and basically get a recert, but you kind of skip a lot of the certification process, the tedious, long part of it. So financially, I know there was talk about increasing it, but I can't get the specifics, I don't have those offhand. I could find out, though.
It went from 180 hours to 280.
Yeah.
Oh, class, times. So, you know, it's kind of prohibitive to get people to take that class, especially when you have to travel like night school to M E T C, absolutely, yeah.
Yep, yeah, and that's, that's exactly the issue that we're facing, is they're, in an effort to lower like response times and things of that nature, they're trying to increase the responsibilities of the EMT and the first responders, and give them more, you know, triage-type things within, on their way, which is nice for that first responder, but then, as you pointed out, that adds on an extra 100 hours of training.
Thank you. Library Board.
We met on May 17th. We, we welcomed a new school board rep, Superintendent Sins appointed Ann Moore, and Bailey did her orientation on May 11th, and, and attended her first meeting, and it's going well. We also provided feedback and discussed briefly the one-year evaluation for Bailey, because she's completed her first year, which has been done. The draft was sent to us, and we're going to be ready for a June, a review of the June 22nd meeting, but I can tell you it was an excellent evaluation, she's doing a fabulous job. And that's, I won't take any more of her thunder, but there you go. And our next meeting date is going to be June 21st, I believe it's a Wednesday because of concerts in the park, or did I get that wrong?
22nd.
It's the 21st.
The 22nd is the Tuesday.
Oh, yeah, then it's the 22nd. Yep. We moved to Wednesday so that it didn't conflict with concerts in the park.
Thank you.
Yep. And that's what I will offer, and I'm sure you have tons more.
So like Terry said, we last met on May 17th. At our last meeting, we were still exploring flooring options. Again, we're like looking at less maintenance options for flooring, as well as something that will be durable and hold up against like, things like salt. My review is coming up in June. We also did a bylaw change related to spending limits on like a single item or service, just so that we have it in writing somewhere, that there's a limit on that and what that limit is. Our summer library program started on the 1st. We have lots of prizes and activities for kids, teens, and adults, I'm really excited for it. This is the first year that I get to kind of do what I want with summer library program, because I started last year and it was already pretty much planned. So I get to like put my own spin on it, which is nice. The walking book club, first meeting for the walking book club is June 11th at 2:30, this is Saturday, this coming Saturday. We had 22 attendees at our rock painting event, and then we created nine-to-go kits from the leftover supplies. So we had a great turnout for that. I met with the new Maisel Maney Director, Brian Cole, he seems really excited to be partnering more with us on some of our programming and events, so I'm excited to, to work with him going forward. Our space needs assessment and our ADA report is still in the works. I've got the space needs assessment portion back from the folks at S P L S, I'm just waiting on the ADA report, but I'll be prepared to, as soon as I get all of the information I need to present. We did get our new website, so some exciting features, there's like a search bar at the top, which I'm excited for. It's tiny, but it makes it so much more usable. And it's a much more navigable and attractive homepage, it looks much more modern than it did before, and it has links to things like contacting us and like supporting by giving donations, and also ways to like search the catalog from. Really excited about that. And I felt like I needed a vacation after that was done. We are doing some pop-up libraries this summer, primarily at the farmer's market, just a couple of times over the summer. So once in June and once in July. But we'll have a browsing collection. We'll have the ability to make library cards. And we'll also have like craft kits. Giveaways and fun things for folks too. And our next meeting is June twenty-second at seven P M.
Thank you, Bailey. Public Works.
Public Works met on Monday, May ninth, ten o'clock in the morning. Most of the discussion Sean had covered what was going on with Vanguard. Did the high school get hooked up?
Yeah, kind of.
Okay.
Today.
Oh, really?
Temporary, so yeah.
And we're going to be dealing with the electrical, so I won't go into that. We've got a quote for a replacement pump for the fluoride treatment that none of the rest of our underpass. We're going to bring that probably back around on June thirteenth, which is our next meeting. We're going to be chip sealing Blue Mound Street. We approved twenty-one thousand four hundred dollars to chip seal Blue Mounds, Canal Street, Riverview Drive, River Court, Webb Street, and the Public Works shop parking lot was well within budget. Talking about cameras. I'm still batting that around. Can a camera be added to a new sewer jetter? So we could maybe do two things with one piece of equipment. Property, still waiting on that. That's ongoing. Paint, that's still ongoing. And the big orange truck continues to have issues. Engine fans down. We're expecting about twenty-six hundred dollars in work. And we kept, want to keep the street sweeper and the jetter on the agenda for updates and discussion. We really need that jetter, I think, number one. Ditch update. We got the Perel work done. And it's just other, other future things. We're going to talk about ARPA funding projects and utility budgets and planner ideas. Our next, do you have anything to add to that, Major?
Um, not to the meeting, no.
Okay.
You got everything. I think you got director's stuff. So on May seventh, we had a break on a force main, sewer force main, which is over Center Street and Hill View. Repairs were made to that. Been a lot of brush, just with the ash trees and such that have been coming down. Last time we chipped, last Wednesday was a little incident for first time ever. The truck. Yep, the chips in the chipper truck caught on fire somehow. Quick action of the crew though, they got it out before there was any issues.
Put it out?
Yeah, we had to call firefighter and put it out. Lots of compost. We were struggling to find sites to get rid of that. I do have two available dump spots for that, so we're sitting comfortably now with getting rid of that. Lot of coal patch done with the chip sealing coming up. We had a couple curb stops at the shop we fixed, a couple N Red Hawk getting up to grade with the new houses and landscaping and such. I did go through, I had some emails for a P F A sample kit, free of cost to us. They wanted to do it, us to do it next week, but we got meters and brush chipping. So I think I'm pushing it back to the end of the month. So there'll be some training videos and such on getting those taken care of. C C R report was done, consumer confidence report, that was put into the newspaper by Shelley. I got it sent to the D N R, C M R, which I'll get that finished up here shortly. I guess one of the things would be parks related. Another company came in to look at the ball field. I haven't seen any prices back for that yet. Library, I did order you guys a new air conditioner for the library will be installed next Monday.
Just in time for us to get back in.
Yes.
Appreciate it.
Yep. Back to the street sweeper, I guess we did have cross planes come in the week of Memorial Day, just to try to clean stuff up. And next day after, everything falls, the helicopters and that, so it's back to square one. No gain there. That's all I got.
Thanks, Bailey.
Yep.
Parks committee, Jerry.
All right, so we met May eleventh, six P M. Cooper property, we've kind of already talked about that a few times tonight, so I don't have any more to add to that. Down at Community Park, we ordered a new solar light for the flagpole. The last one we had, those gale force winds took it out. So ordered a new one, a new model, so hopefully that won't happen again. And then as Matt mentioned, took a look at the ball field. It's looking like, no matter what we do, we, we kind of need to replace it. And so we're looking at either switching to a grass infield or keeping it kind of the same style as we have now. So that's a pretty large discussion that we're still having and we don't really have much output on that at the moment. We are going to try to look to see if maybe we can use some ARPA funds for that to help offset the cost of, of that construction. Moving on to Vets Park, it's been a little bit of issues, it sounds like, with the rental of the chipper. If I remember correctly, there was, they're switching over to a new style. And instead of saving their new, their old ones, they got rid of them. So where there's like a backorder for them. Did I remember that correctly?
Stump grinder.
Yep.
Yep, stump grinder, yeah. So that kind of puts a delay into our ability to replace the trees there. So we, we've decided that, you know, we're, we're going to get beyond the list for the stump grinders. And we're going to move the tree replacement to more towards the budget time of later this year to work that into next year's budget and have a, get those in next year, hopefully. And then we, we decided that to shift our focus from the tree replacement to more of just kind of maintenance and beautifying the area, painting the fence, so forth and so on. So we're going to look at just kind of doing upkeeps and, and doing what we can with what we got for right now. We also talked about, we brainstormed what we thought, like a planner, if we brought, the village brought in a planner, what the Parks Committee could suggest as ideas towards projects that that planner could look at or look at getting grants for, building plans out, things of that nature. Shelley, if you didn't get that last, let me know and I will send it to you because I was supposed to do that and didn't.
Yeah, right. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, so you don't have it? Okay. It also got brought up, so this kind of goes back to the, the Legion and their building. There was discussion again around the, the land in that area and who actually donated it and what it means if we remove the tennis court and put something else there. What kind of verbal contract are we violating in that aspect? So we're still kind of investigating that issue again. So might have to have some further discussions with community members. Cause I don't believe that was anything that was formally written down as a contract. So I don't know what kind of legal obligations we have there outside of community good faith. And we talked a little bit about trying to spruce up. Yep.
Can I stop you for a minute? Cause I want, you know, the Legion gave that, the building and whatever, and so much property. What, what's the confusion there about that land?
Who actually owned the land if it wasn't the Legion? Somebody said, I don't know if it's Scott's, you, somebody up here heard that two ladies had owned it? And they gave it, donated it to.
As long as it stayed a tennis court, but this is something that goes back to.
Yeah.
Sometimes on the board. I mean, we've been talking about this for twenty.
Well, that's, I was just saying, the Legion gave up that building and what their edge of that property.
Building wasn't there, were they?
Well.
Down there.
Yeah.
This wasn't.
Right next door.
Where the church is. The Legion had the part where the church is now.
Legion had the building when I went in.
Well, no.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of discussion about who, what, where.
Well, because they convinced, but told me that they had the church.
Yeah.
And so then he don't, because the village then promised so much money to the Legion to help build them a new home.
Or the village.
Okay, so the, yeah, so the Legion came in and they went through minutes going back.
Forever to find it. Remember that's where we were going to check the church.
Yeah, so that's where that was left. There's no one could find any documentation. In the last minute from the village show that the Legion was supposed to come back with an agreement. No one ever came back with it. That's where it stopped.
That's probably when it turned.
Oh, there's something there.
There's something there, so we just need to dig.
Yeah, so.
That's all that's happened. Thank you.
Is there a way to check with like county records on who would have that parcel? Nothing?
Uh, that would be property title search.
Yeah, I'm just asking.
Yeah, the, that only got it brought up because, you know, we're, we're talking about what we can do with the parks and stuff. And we just want to make sure that we're not going to step on any toes or cross any lines by moving the tennis court down to Community Park and putting something else in its place. You know, if the agreement was tennis court and that's what it's got to stay, then, you know, we just want to do our due diligence so that we're not going back on anything that was agreed upon. Let's see, outside of that, where was I? Oh, so last thing would just be kind of the pet project program that we got going on. Megan brought that she would like to see A E Ds put out throughout the community. So like Veterans Park and the baseball diamonds and things of that nature. So I took that to the EMS committee to find out what we can, what information I can to help her with that. And they came back and gave us a, the EMS, EMS committee county chair, who is Carrie Muir. So we'll reach out to, reach out to them and see what, if there's any kind of money that they can, you know, grants or donations or whatever we can do to help get those in. And then the EMS committee too also mentioned that they could help us with the ordering of those. Cause they order them for, they said the pool and the library and so on. So if we do decide to do that and come up with a plan, as far as like how we're going to secure them so there isn't just an A E device sitting in a park somewhere being played with. We have options of, of going down that path. So more to come on that. And then outside of that, we will be meeting again on July eighteenth at six P M.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
There's not been one.
I'm not on it anymore. We will have to, I think we have a board meeting, interviews and police committee all at once. Cause we're going to have to interview here coming up.
Yeah.
They've narrowed it down to six.
At this point, don't we need a park committee to read? That's because Scott's not on anymore and no one's.
A police committee meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, but the board wants to do interviews too.
Yeah.
So there's only one other person that we'd invite, which would be Jen, who's on police committee. And we do it as one and then they can have a police committee meeting later. That way we don't have two meetings for the same thing.
Okay.
All right. Consideration of motion go into closed session. Michigan Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five parent one parent E, deliberating or negotiating purchase of public property, investment of public funds or conducting other specified public business. Whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require closed session. Electrical substation. I may, I make a motion we go into closed session. Second. Roll call vote.
Roll call vote. Mitch Thompson.
Yes.
James Coyle.
Yes.
Scott Catten.
Yes.
Cam Lewis-Ryngel.
Yes.
Jared Ramerson.
Yes.
Gary Moyer.
Yes.
Tyler Munson.
Yes.
All right. We'll go to this motion to. All right, so I'll make the motion that we go ahead and continue to pursue the Xander property as one. I'll make a separate motion for that.
You want, so you want to start with just the land?
Yeah.
And then I think, I like this idea about, well, make it contingent on.
Yes, I agree. Contingent on approval.
Of the substation.
Yeah, I agree.
I'll second.
Any more discussion?
No, I was just wanting to make sure that I knew what you were saying.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No. Both? No?
Can we hear from Jared?
Jared, you still with us?
Yeah, sorry. I was on mute. I was in favor.
Next motion is that I will make a motion to approve the purchase of the substation from Evansville.
The transformer.
The transformer, sorry.
And regulators.
And the regulator. Yeah. Can we? Cause we have to have a meeting. And I'll second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both? Aye. All right.
Do we need to specify in there that the price that.
Well, I, I think the price could change for the property. I mean, it's not going to exceed what this is. We already know the fixed cost.
I'm more saying just that the price of the transformer and the.
Yeah, I agree with that. Price of the transformer.
Well, we've already passed the motion.
All right. So you're going to call them tomorrow and say, yes, we're on this.
As presented.
Yes, as presented. I should have said that. I apologize.
Should have too.
Plus you get a cheaper, Bruce.
Yeah, get a cheaper.
We're going to say you have another one.
As presented.
You really feel like to have it, you know?
You just could tell it's been a long time since the date.
All right, any other, any other business that may be brought before the board for future agendas?
Um, I'm going to bring up a note that I'm going to be getting ready to go off our garbage R F P. Since our contract expires at the end of this year, it's time to get those gotten ready out. So we have them back for a good time.
That's gonna be fun.
Garbage. Are you looking, are you looking at the ones?
You're looking at the ones that are like Mesa Maney. Well.
County, county was the only one that would not or didn't do that. All the rest of our.
I would like them to be affordable for either or.
Okay.
Cause I'm pretty sure.
I know that you're going to have them.
Yeah, that's.
So when you don't fit in that, you get charged for it.
Yep.
So I will hopefully hand it R F P out before the end of June. I will expect them back probably July.
I have more trash.
Okay, anything else for the agendas?
It'll be fun.
Next meeting, July, what, when are we? We got matches in the park?
Yeah. Other forces.
So should we go to the first Wednesday of the month? We've got Tuesday.
Um, I am going to be out of country for the first two weeks of July.
All right. Aye. Sounds like fun.
Where are we going?
Paris and London.
Oh.
Thank you, mom and dad.
Aye.
Damn.
They adopted.
Anybody else have a problem with the first Wednesday of July?
That is, did July six.
July?
That's July six. Six P M?
It's good. Yep, six P M.
Please interview me.
What?
Please interview. When do we want to set that up? That we should be done this month.
Till that day. Or sooner.
Sorry, you wanted to do six interviews and Anna Bart meeting tonight?
Well, I'd rather do that than have like twenty-eight minutes.
True. So we're going to have six people and figure at least twenty minutes each. You don't want to do that.
Narrow down to one?
I'd rather do it all in one than have three or four of.
Yeah.
You know? If I'm going to blow a night, I want all one.
Yeah, I do. I agree.
Yep.
When do we want to do that?
And so we're looking in June?
Yep.
When's the soonest available?
Tuesday or Thursday?
Thursday is probably better for me.
Not Thursday doesn't work for me.
Doesn't? Oh, I bet it doesn't.
Thank you.
I'm open.
I can do it Monday.
What's Thursday at the shake?
Monday works for me.
I can do a Monday at one, it's after five. What are you talking? What'd you say, Pam? Please interview us. I can do Monday or Tuesday. Are you talking thirteenth and fourteenth or twentieth and twenty-first?
Thirteenth and fourteenth.
I can't do the twenty-first. There's county's in the park and I have Legion.
I can't do thirteenth and fourteenth. I can do twenty, twenty-one.
Yep.
I can do twenty.
Twenty to the twenty.
I can do twenty.
Twenty is.
I can do twenty.
I can't do twenty.
Jared can't do twenty. No. Jared can't do twenty.
I, I can't do the week of the twentieth at all.
Okay, so.
I, I can make twenty-seventh work.
Monday is twenty-seventh?
All right, I can do that.
What time do you want to start?
Six. I can't be, yeah, I may be late. It's Monday's my late day, but I'll.
Wait, how many do six people at twenty minutes?
I don't know. I'm just saying, I'm just throwing that number out just so you realize.
No, but I mean, I would say twenty to almost a half hour.
Yeah.
I mean, you got.
That's two hours. It's, it's going to be a two-hour meeting.
It's going to be long.
Whatever. I'd better do it in one than twenty minutes.
I would too.
Two hours.
Twenty-seventh starting at six o'clock?
Yep.
But we need time in between to talk about them too.
No, we interview them all, then we have time at the end to talk about them. Take your notes.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second. Second, yep.
Thanks for coming, Bruce.
Thank you very much.
Aye.
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 Scott?
I might have a problem with Mondays and thirteenth for Public Works.
Thank you.
I'm trying to make the.